Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, it's an honor and a privilege to be here on behalf of the 214,000 citizens of Lackawanna County, the Board of Commissioners. Congratulations, we have six great bookmarkers here today. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Laura Cadden Foley, Lackawanna County's Commissioner for Women.[23.25][23.25](applause) Also an invader.
What honey?
Also an invader.
Yeah, that's right. We've got a lot of Westsiders in the House as usual, we thank you for that. Well, welcome everybody. I'm Laurie Cadden, and I'm the President of the Lackawanna County Commission for Women, as are all of these lovely ladies seated here and here, our board members. So if we could give them a nice round of applause for all the work that they do.[50.62][50.62](applause) Thank you for joining us. So, parents and children and commissioners, I should say first, thank you. We have wonderful people in the audience who your children have written about and drawn their beautiful pictures, some people, we have the Scranton Times in the House, and of course, ECTV is being filmed, our wonderful program by my friend over there, Mr. Mark McGlory. So, thank you. And Joanne, you're back here too, and Amy's all the way, and Judy, so thank you. So, we're going to start with, we have, again, year after year, we are overwhelmed with the amount of time it takes for you guys to take the time out of your day to write about a woman in history. We do this in March because it is National Women's History Month, and we are delighted for that. So, we thank you for participating. I know it's extra work, but you can do it, because you keep putting them out year after year after year. And I must say that Mrs. Borthwick, who is in the House, and Mr. Yakavazzi's class always come through with many, 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 many submissions. So, we thank you for that. And the teachers need to be complimented, because we send these book, we send the applications to every 7th grade in the county of Lackawanna, both public, private charter, and everybody has an opportunity to participate. We always get an overwhelming response, and Donna can attest to this as the immediate past Chairman of this Board. It's amazing, the work that comes out of West Scranton Intermediate. And as I said, and I'll never stop saying, I'm a proud invader, and the first graduating class, that's how old I am, kids. The first graduating class out of that middle school when it was built, okay? So, I have great pride in that place, and therefore, great pride in you guys. And then we have North Pocono in the House, and I have to mention this, North Pocono, even though Bill Kromachi is a teacher at North Pocono, Bill Kromachi's dad is a Westsider who also graduated high school with me. So, we have to say, we're bringing it all over Westside here, okay? So, thank you for that, and thanks for helping us, and so, we're going to get right to it. And Becky, you're here too, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. So, we're going, we get so many people that we decided last year, and we did it again this year, to award two people first, two people second, two people third. It's so hard. So, when you hear from these kids and you see what they've done, you'll understand. So, we're going to start with the 3rd place. The first one we have as a tie for 3rd place is Zachary Dealy, and he wrote, his bookmark was about Sister Adrienne Barrett. So, Zach, if you want to come up, honey, you can read this.[207.23][207.23](applause) He's, Zachary's the lone male in this, how bout it, guys? How bout it?[219.12][219.12](applause) And you have to see, because this picture, I swear to you, would think you're sitting talking to Sister Adrienne.
It really is, it's a great picture, Mike, it's a great picture.
Okay, Zach, so if you could do me a favor, and read your story, tell everybody why you picked Sister, and there you go. And you can adjust that microphone, okay?
Sister Adrienne Barrett was born on February 14, 1929, in Scranton, PA. She was given the name Dorothy, and she was the daughter of the late Paul Mildred Paden Barrett. She entered the Immaculate Heart Mary, oh, Heart of Mary Congregation on September 8, 1948, 6, and made her temporary profession, profession of vows on May 9, 1949. Sister Adrienne served as a teacher in the following schools, Immaculate Conception Elementary School in West Piston, PA, Street Roses School in Silver Spring, Maryland, as well as several others. Sister Adrienne founded in the nonprofit charitable organizations of, no, Friends of the Poor, a sponsored ministry of congregation of the Sisters, servants of Immaculate Heart of Mary. The missions of Friends of the Poor is to erase the burden of living in poverty and change the quality of life for all who live in the low to moderate income communities. She received a Bachelor of Art degree in History/English from Marywood College. The minister brings together in friendships those who have the desires to give with those who are in need of assistance. She received awards like the American Awards from Be- Nell, Brinnell, Beris, the, go ahead, the, 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 the,[444.13]
Next up, we don't have our recipient here with us today. Her name is Emma Buckingham. However, we do have the woman that she wrote about, Ms. Eda Castro. She's in the house right here. So, we're going to call Eda up, and Eda might do a nice job of reading what this young lady wrote about her, and we'll see what she can do. And Eda, come on up and join us.
I know it, but you know.
This is Eda, everyone.
So, it's weird because I'm going to be talking about myself in 3rd person, but here she goes. Make-believe-um, Emma. Eda Castro is important to Lackawanna County as she currently serves on the Scranton Area Foundation Board and chairs their Human Resources Committee. Not only that, but she is also a founder of Women in Philanthropy. Women in Philanthropy is a foundation initiative to increase engaged philanthropy for the benefit of women and girls in northeast Pennsylvania. Eda also serves on the Greater Wilkes-Barre Chamber of Commerce and chairs its nomination committee, and chairs the Employment Opportunities Training Center Board from 2013 to 2015. She's also a member of the Board of United Neighborhood Center in Scranton, Pennsylvania.
You would tell everybody what, just briefly, where you're from, what you do, because we didn't announce that, and why you think this lovely lady picked you.
So, oh my goodness, so where am I from? That's an existential question. It'd take an hour to talk about.
Because you're not from the area, so we love it, so.
I was born in New York City. I was raised in Puerto Rico, and I've been in this area now for 10 years. I came here to help build the Commonwealth Medical College, now known as the Geisinger School of Medicine. I'm the Vice President for Community Engagement and the Chief Diversity Officer at the school. And it's been a pleasure to be able to serve this lovely community, and I'm really honored that this child chose me. And to me, that says that maybe somebody was inspired by what I've done, and I can think of no greater honor than that.
Nice.
And I put this on you, because you are a winner.
But this is her medal.
Doesn't matter.
I'm usurping her credit.
Come on, Donna, turn around with this lady.
This is my buddy.
You get in the medal, kiddo.
Bernie.
All righty.
Can I say something about it? The one thing they didn't say about what she did is the best thing she did since she came here. She adopted a girl. Tell them this story. I mean, this to me is too.
No, there are other people that needs to be honored. Don't embarrass them.
But it's a wonderful thing, that is. Well, he's not here, so we're going to have to have one of the kids help us with that. I don't, Mrs. Borthwick. She's marrying her too.
I'm marrying her off.
And did you, did you give her the? We'll give it, Michelle, we'll give you this till when you're, yeah. But Donna. Okay, thank you, everybody. So, up next, we have 2nd place winners. And the first one is from a lovely young lady named Ella Frownfekler. Ella wrote about, did I say that right, Ella? Felker, see? Dean, okay, Frown Felker, I got it. Ella wrote a wonderful story about our dear friend Sarah Hofius Hall. Sarah is a journalist with the Scranton Times. Sarah and her husband and her two beautiful little girls, a brand-new baby, are in the house because Sarah wanted to see you again and thank you, and so, we're going to call you up, Ella, as well as Sarah, and you can read what you wrote about Sarah to her if you want to come up, honey, okay?
Sarah Hofius Hall is a journalist for the Scranton Times Tribune. Her writing and investigative work has done many positive things for this community. A few years ago, her investigation put someone into federal prison for 33 months, which made a great difference in our local community. She also had to face discrimination towards her dreams, such as when she was starting out as a journalist, and some men would not take her seriously. However, Sarah Hofius Hall has pushed through all of this to become the inspiring journalist that she is today.
So, in 5th grade, I wrote my first newspaper article for my middle school newspaper, and from that day, I wanted to be a journalist. So, to have somebody, like, I get teary-eyed all the time, so I just think that it's so awesome to have somebody, you know, see the importance of our profession. And I know that Ella wants to be a journalist, right? And at this time, we need people like Ella. We need people who are eager, who are talented, and to have, you know, my two daughters here, during Women's History Month is especially great. So, I just wanted to thank the commission and thank Ella, and it's just a very special day. So, thank you.
Come on, Sarah. Let Donna put that on for you.
I'm going to put this sign for you. Wrong way.
And Sarah, you hang out with us till coming.
Congratulations, honey.
Okay, up next, we have, let me get this in here. We have our next, our 2nd place, another tie for 2nd place. And this is Isabella. Isabella, make sure I say your name correctly. Gilati, okay, see? That's so easy. Isabella Gilati, she's in the house, and she wrote about our very first, she might be in the room, I think, she might be sitting up here to my far-right Commissioner Lorraine Cummings, who is the very first female Lackawanna County Commissioner in the history of Lackawanna County. And so, Isabella wrote about her, so come on up, honey, and you're going to talk a little bit, read your story, and see what happens here. Commissioner Cummings is coming over with you. There you go.
Lorraine Cummings is a very important and prominent woman in Lackawanna County. Lorraine had the honor of being the first woman elected as a Lackawanna County Commissioner. Lorraine was awarded the 2003 Businesswoman of the Year by the National Republican Congressional Committee Business Advisory Council. Lorraine also served two years as a Secretary of the Board of the Greater Northeast Chamber of Commerce and was nominated to the Who's Who among women. In addition to Lorraine being a Lackawanna State Committee Woman, she is also the Chairwoman of the 114th Legislative District Republican Committee. Lorraine also founded the Scranton Tea Party and serves as President of the Marjory Scranton Council of Republican Women.
Thank you so much. That was very, very nice. Thank you so much. It's such an honor. Thank you. You have no idea. When I heard, I heard at the Women's Commission, and I was taken aback because I did not expect to have this, especially as a sitting Commissioner, maybe after I was done, and to be recognized in such a way by our younger generation, our younger women. It really is an honor and a privilege. Thank you very much for that. And to think that someone of my background, and like I said, I always, always first and foremost go to, I give glory to God for everything, and, you know, I've had a tremendous gift given to me. My mom, who wasn't able to raise me, chose life, but, you know, I grew up in foster care, and I had been watched over, and I think I've tried to do the best I can to be the best in the community and try and do what I can to help the people. And obviously, there was someone that recognized that work and that achievement, and I'm very thrilled that it was you, and thank you so very much. I can't say how honored I am to everyone. Thank you all for being here today, to recognize so many prestigious women, to stand in the same presence with all of them is a true honor. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, what do you think of the picture?
I think we should send this in to John Cole, because it's much better than his. Isn't this much better than John Cole's?
Honey, I would have gotten Gilati. I would have gotten that without a problem.
Where's my daughter at? There you go, sweetheart.
Thank you, honey. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Can I get a picture with my daughter, please? That's my daughter.
Hi, daughter Alicia.
She's the only one that can get off work.
Beautiful, strong women. Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you. And up next, we have the two 1st place winners. First, we are going to have Victoria Pula come up. Victoria is Mrs. Borthwick's teacher. She did a beautiful, and I should have been showing these, and I kept forgetting. Teacher, did I say? Help me, kids. Mrs. Borthwick's, Mark, you know, it's always typical. Student, okay. I'm going to show everybody's too, but here's Victoria's picture. See that? Come on up, kid. She wrote about Elizabeth Lynett, and we, she and her brothers founded the Scranton Times, so she is going to read a little bit about why she chose Miss Elizabeth Lynett. There you go, kiddo.
Elizabeth Lynett went undercover in, wait, I think I started off wrong, please. Okay, never mind. Elizabeth Lynett went undercover in sweatshops and textile mills exposing abuses the press ignored. Elizabeth Lynett exposed the exploitation of employees forced to work long hours for slave wages in appalling conditions. Elizabeth's pioneering series of articles in 1933 were published by newspapers nationwide. They made her a hero to local workers and caused the state legislation and the Ladies' Garment Workers Union to open investigations. She spent a year working in Philadelphia borough in the associative press and returned to the Times with her brother Ed. After the death of her brother, William, as a co-publisher, she died in 1959.
That's a great picture. You do not have to, absolutely not. We want to give you this. Have. You don't have to do anything you don't want to. Okay, there you go. Honey, don't worry.
Don't worry about anything. You're beautiful.
From Bernie?
Yeah. Congratulations.
You're welcome. Go and sit and relax. Before we go on, I want to make sure I get all these. This was Commissioner Cummings. Her, what the, was her wonderful picture. We did Zach, right? And, so we have Lorraine, and Miss Sarah's, which, she even has the same color hair as Sarah has in this. I love it. Okay, so they're done. And minus the glasses, this is Miss Eda. Okay? Okay. And then, of course, we saw Zach's, but we'll show it again because it's here, because he's the only boy here, so, okay? There we go. And then, we did, again, victorious. Okay, last, but certainly not least, we have Samantha Lee McFadden, who is a, who is a stu, I was going to say teacher, do you see? I'm making you kids way older, who is a student of Mr. Kromachi, who is her teacher at North Pocono, and we'd like you to, come on up, honey. Samantha chose to write about Clara Peck Little, and she's going to tell you the significance, but it's interesting, and you did a great job. Let me show you her. There you go. All right, kiddo. Read away. Okay?
Clara Peck Little was most known for being the first woman admitted to the Lackawanna County Bar Association when she was only 26 years old. She was born in 1876 and was raised in Scranton, Pennsylvania. She became a lawyer for Patterson and Wilcox, working in orphans' court, making sure that each child had a proper home to live in. When she married Charles Little, who was also an attorney, she retired from her job with the law. Mrs. Little will always be remembered for her dedication to her practice of law and helping all the children she could. In 1966, Clara passed away at the age of 90.
Yeah, come on over here. Bernie has a little treat for you, and Donna's going to put your.
Number. And the other one was number.
Okay? Take a picture with Miss Fran.
There you go. Congratulations.
Well, that concludes our 2018 contest and the winners and everybody else who's here. We thank you for being here on our part. I know the commissioners are going to speak, but I'm just going to finalize. I thank you again. Again, keep these things coming, please, as teachers, Bill and Michelle, it means so much to us if everybody would take the time in all of these schools that you've done to help us and to get these in and submit these to us so that we can look at this. It is National Women's History Month. It's important to us that we keep doing this and that people are honored, both in our past, who are contemporaries, and those coming up. We need to make sure women are continued to be honored and respected and given the spotlight like we deserve. So, thank you, all of you, for being here. Thank you to the board, which we will meet a little bit afterwards. And again, we're going to have the commissioner say a few words, and again, thank you so very, very much, and happy Easter.
Commissioner Cummings?
Well, I think that all of the, I'm sure you had a very difficult time, because every drawing here is absolutely beautiful. I mean, the detail in all of them are, every single one, you could pick out a specific detail that's just so beautiful and so hard to, I mean, in the Lackawanna County one for, that Ms. Gilati did for me, they have all the symbols and the little, everything is here. And then, in Clara Little, I was looking, it's 1890, right up, I mean, this is amazing, some of these, these pictures, just, I mean, every single one is beautiful. Thank you so much for all the participants. Thank you for the teachers for, you know, encouraging this to be a part of your curriculum. Thank you to the Women's Commission, who obviously, I'm so proud to be here to help, support, and represent, and I'm so happy that some of the women that are on the board, I've known for a long time, and one belongs to a group that really means so, right to the heart. So, thank you, Peg. And to President Lori Cadden, Lorraine Cadden, who shares my name, who is constantly trying to help me regardless of where we're at, and I do owe you a great big of thanks for carrying me through the Society of Irish Women's Dinner so that I didn't feel too out of place. And to Ms. Barbetti, oh, Donna, thank you so much. To all of you on the Women's Commission, I really appreciate the work that you're doing, and, you know, I'm so happy to be here. When I was speaking to the Scranton Times earlier, I started to break down because, you know, I was talking to him, he was asking me questions about the past, so to think that a little girl or a young girl, young woman, I'm so sorry, you are a young woman, in our area took time to recognize the achievements or anything that I've done in my past is truly an honor, and I am so grateful for that. You know, I, words can't express how happy I am and how proud I am. And it's, you know, I hope that I have inspired you, and I hope I've inspired many others, and I thank you for the opportunity to actually be a part of it. Thank you all.
Commissioner Oteriani?
I'd like to thank the Women's Commission for doing a great job for many years now. It's an organization I'm very familiar with. I would like to give special congratulations to Commissioner Cummings for being chosen. The parents and the teachers have to be so proud of their children that are involved in this, and they all did a wonderful, wonderful job. And thank you to the students for what you've done and helped us try to look at things in a better light and a little understanding of some history, and we really, really do appreciate your support and your help and what you've done, and thank everyone here for what they've done. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the students, Emma, Zachary, Ella, Isabella, Samantha, and Victoria. The bookmarksers are second to none. Like, I really mean it, like, just the pictures alone are amazing, and the stories are great, but the pictures are so incredible, and they're so detailed, like, Commissioner Cummings even has her cross on her actual picture. It's amazing. Look, you got, well, you have your glasses on. But yeah, amazing. What a great job. To the teachers, you know, it really is, you know, the teachers inspire, and there's always a special teacher in your life that just brings something to the table that you always remember the rest of your life. Thank you for inspiring your students to move forward with these bookmarksers. I think they're incredible. And to the Women's Commission, this is, this is a big part of what the Women's Commission's about. I mean, this is about our future generations here. That's what it's about. Inspiring these, like, there might be a young girl that's going to be a writer after this, you know what I mean? There might be a young girl that wants to be a commissioner, and we got a young boy, Zachary, here, you know what I mean? He might be involved in all kinds of charitable organizations, you know what I mean? We have so many great things that these markers are about and who these people are, and the role that they played in the history of Lackawanna County, you know, and just, on behalf of the 214,000 citizens, congratulations. And to the parents, great job on your children, you did a great job. And last but not least, we're, the two of us will never live it down, but Commissioner Cummings got a bookmarker, so. Congratulations, Commissioner.
That's right. I got it.
Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Cummings does have a great story, and it needs to be, it needs to be told, and it's, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Guys, we have some bookmarks for you to take, and if anyone wants to put their plaque in the sleeve to carry home, please feel free to put them back in, okay? If you want to come up, and we'll hand out some for you each.
Alicia, can we get pictures again?
Oh, we need a picture.
Do a picture with all of them.
Mr. Fran, we're doing a photo with all of the kids. Can I have all of the recipients, all the children who have wanted to come up here so we can get a picture with the commissioners, please? It's fine, honey. It's fine.